Welcome, everyone, to the January 11th City Council meeting. Welcome, everyone, home and here. Happy New Year to any of you that we haven't said that to yet. First item up this evening is, at the beginning of the year, we elect our council officers. And so I'm going to turn to our current council president, who's going to nominate our upcoming president.
All right. I move to elect Greg Evans as President of the City Council for 2016.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Betty already seconded.
Betty, oh, she's senior.
Senior member. Turn off your hearing, anybody, please.
Sorry. All right. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition passes. Next?
I move to elect Alan Zalinka as Vice President of the City Council for 2016.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate.
That's what you get for missing a meeting.
Eight in favor, none in opposition, passes. Congratulations and thank you for serving as our council president this last year. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next up, so now I have to switch and you can stay where you are this time, but...
We'll move you next.
But you have to move whatever comes up, so...
I got that, but that's...
You got it.
After the public forum.
Mr. Seconded.
Yes.
I'm your seconded.
Next to the public forum, the public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence. For Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes, although you are encouraged to not take up all of the three minutes if you don't need to. Because we have 35 people signed up. First up, Mariah Lund, followed by Colin Taylor.
Greetings. I'm Mariah Lund.
Could you use the microphone for the radio audience?
I'm sorry, what?
The TV audience uses the microphone.
I see. Okay, the last time I spoke, though, there's quite a drag. I hear what I'm saying a few words later. Is that still happening?
Just try it.
Give her a shot there.
Okay. It slows me down. Okay, I'll start.
Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Mariah Lund, Eugene, Ward 8. I want to encourage the Eugene City Council to follow the lead of Seattle, Portland, and Albany, which have drafted resolutions supporting their Muslim communities in rejecting Islamophobia. I'm providing a packet of relevant information for Mayor Piercy and our councilors that includes the text of the Seattle resolution. This packet also includes a guest opinion submitted to the Oregonian by Portland's Ned Roche, a Jewish Voice for Peace activist. He describes the upsurge of hate crimes against Muslims nationwide and urges commitment to condemn anti-Muslim profiling. He also urges us to examine the connection between Islamophobia, racism, U.S. and Israeli policies, and the war on terror. It's important to connect the local with the global. He correctly observes that, quote, "Islamophobia permeates our public discourse and is embedded in our domestic and foreign policy." Education is necessary to disentangle fact from fiction and to recognize the motives behind the fiction. To that end, I have also included links to some key resources, key sources of Islamic phobic propaganda. I've been a victim of violence, harassment, and threats here in Eugene for my pro-Palestinian human rights work, and I understand well what it means to be targeted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colin Taylor is up next, followed by Sage Fox. Uh-uh, no clapping, please.
Evening, folks. How you doing? Evening, folks. How you doing? I'd like to address...
Introduce yourself first.
Myself. My name's Colin Taylor. I live in Eugene. I've been a little out of circuit in the political struggles that have been happening, spending a lot of time in meditation, visiting Keysee Square. Keysee Square! So, I've been a little on, you might say, the opposite side of the fence on the issue because I haven't been wondering so much whether or not a building is going to go up on Keysee Square, but wondering more so which buildings we're going to take down to make more public parks. You see, humans need space to be good to each other. We spend a lot of time indoors, away from each other. When there aren't opportunities to be good, we default to other practices. There's very few of us who are capable of extending love and goodwill if we don't have contact, context, and contact with people to receive this goodwill. There have been some good improvements. I see that Next Door has been paved for a homeless shelter. That's really beautiful. I'm glad to see that's going in. So it's interesting, you know, because I spend a lot of time walking the streets, spending time one-on-one with people who are houseless, homeless, home-free, vagabond, you understand. And a lot of times, someone will approach me, you know, nowadays, I dress a little better and I'm a little cleaner in the face and I have nice teeth, these things. And someone will approach, "Hey, here, just pay me a dollar." And I say, "Hey, man, how are you doing?" And they go, "Oh." They totally change immediately. That contact, that personal relationship, it's not possible without public space. No, it is possible, but it's a lot more difficult. So instead of having a round table where we're each getting to, like, look at each other, like, "How y'all doing?", like, a little eye contact, you know, this is the real juice of freedom, of being able to comfortably and safely look in a stranger's eye and say, "I'm here for you if you need me. I love you," if you can receive that in a form that is safe, "I'm your friend." So please don't build on Keysee Square. Namaste.
Next up is Sage Fox, followed by Karina McWilliams.
Hello, City Council members. I'm Sage Fox from South Eugene High School and the EG350 Club there. And once again, I am here to ask you to move forward with the climate ordinance. So, at this point, I'm sure you're getting somewhat fed up with us coming every time, but we are too. And we know you're very busy, but this is an urgent issue, and we would really appreciate seeing some tangible effects of the ordinance that was passed a while ago. So, we'll keep coming back every week, and we can't wait to see that go forward. So, thank you again, and I look forward to seeing the ordinance move forward and turn into actual practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina McWilliams is next, followed by Wesley Georgiev.
Good evening. My name is Karina McWilliams. I'm a sophomore at South Eugene High School, as well as a representative of the EG350 Club. I live in Ward 3. As always, I'm here to request immediate action regarding the Climate Recovery Ordinance. It has been a year and a half since the ordinance was passed, and little to no action has been We have watched climate change be treated as a complication only second to other issues that have arisen in Eugene. It is easy to see climate change as non-urgent, especially in a state as beautiful as Oregon, but the reality is, we can no longer put the climate on the backburner without expecting catastrophic consequences in the future. This is why, as 2016 begins, we intend to continue in our fight for climate justice with diligence, diplomacy, and hope. We rely on our city officials to uphold the legally binding contract that is the Climate Recovery Ordinance. I consider the protection of the planet as a human responsibility and sincerely hope that all others share this mindset as we take the necessary steps to a clean energy future. Please fully implement the Climate Recovery Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Wesley Georgiev is next, followed by Catalina Gallardo.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council and Mayor Piercy. My name is Wesley Georgiev, and I am a founder of the South Eugene High School Earth Guardians 350 Club. I live in Ward 3. For the last several months, I have meticulously come down to testify before you. I'm starting to wonder, is what we are doing worth it? We have tried being direct and personable. You've seen older community members, all the way down to the little young ones. What will it take for you to do this? Will the new City Hall architects adhere to the new Climate Recovery Ordinance's requirements like our whole city will one day? Each time I come down here, I'm starting to just expect the blank stares and no action. I'm starting to expect the terrible feeling I have each day when I see that nothing is being done. I'm realizing that the idols I once saw as leaders of my community aren't doing their job, and the shining light at the end of the tunnel is growing more dim. Now, for a positive note, please implement the Climate Recovery Ordinance and tell us what we can do.
Okay. Catalina Gallardo is next, followed by Maggie Clark.
Hello, City Councilmember and mayor. My name is Catalina Gallardo in Chilme, and I am from Osorno, Chile. I am a member from the South Eugene High School Earth Guardians 350 Club. During my four months I stayed here, I have met many people who are passionate about climate. Also, I have learned that my friends at the school are doing very much to urge you to use the Climate Recovery Ordinance. And they spend a lot of their, a lot of time out of their days to do what's best for their community. When I go back to Chile, I want to tell my family's success story that I was part of, not an attempt. For my new family here, please implement the Climate Recovery Ordinance. Thank you.
Maggie Clark is next, followed by Deb McGee.
Good evening, City Councilmembers and Mayor Piercy. My name is Maggie Clark, and I am a member of the South Eugene High School Earth, excuse me, Earth Guardians 350 Club. In about two months, I am leaving for an exchange program in Osorno, Chile. So far, I have heard that they have many environmental problems like widespread deforestation, mining, and air and water pollution. Nothing would make me happier than if I can give them hope to grow their movements against climate change by using my own home as an example. Also, if we can decrease our emissions, it makes the whole world a healthier place, which stretches all 7,000 miles down to my new home in Chile. Please look at the position you are in, realize it, and implement the Climate Recovery Ordinance. Thank you.
De McGee is next, followed by Cynthia Kokas.
My name is Deborah McGee. I live at 29755 Lusk Road. I'm here to encourage you, please, to move forward on the Climate Recovery Ordinance. We know that in Paris, 197 nations came together with some goals, and unfortunately, those goals are voluntary. So, while that's movement, what's really important is that the climate recovery here in Eugene is not voluntary. It's not aspirational. It's a mandate, and we as citizens and you as the City Council need to move this forward. We want to be involved. We want to be helpful. This is going to demand, I think, sacrifice and change. We're going to have to do things differently. So, city staff needs to think in new ways about how we're going to meet and implement this carbon reduction budget. Thank you.
Cynthia Kokas is next, followed by Carrie Westlin.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Kokas, and I live at 2465 Jefferson, and George Brown is the lucky person who represents me. Tonight, I speak in the name of Churchman United of Lane County, and we're speaking, we're speaking on global issues. The Trans-Pacific Partnership Act, there in the federal government, people seem to be doing rather dysfunctional things, and the TPP is one of them. And we feel that local governments are called to speak to our federal government about these sort of laws. We oppose international corporate states' right to sue and regulate nation-states. And Churchman United did research when we had NAFTA and when we had CAFTA, and now we've got this, and we oppose all of them on the basis of the facts that we were learning. One of the reasons that we might find ourselves in trouble with the international corporate ruling is, one basis that you can sue people is if we have a rule that might restrict expected future profits. Now, back in 2002, the people of the United States insisted that our government pass COOL, the country of origin labeling on our meat. And it came to a lot of hassles in the federal government where people had other desires, but 95% of Americans want their food labeled. Well, that's over because in 2012, the World Trade Organization ruled that that labeling was illegal because it affected trade. Well, how about that? A few of the current cases we know about coming through this milieu, Egypt is being sued for raising its minimum wage. Australia and Uruguay are being sued for anti-smoking laws. Canada is being sued for a moratorium on fracking. Germany is being sued for phasing out nuclear power. Somehow or other, a large, amorphous group somewhere sits in private sessions, makes rules, and seems to win. And when you win, we are expected to change our law and pay fines, and the fines come from, of course, the citizens. By American, by local, not acceptable. Trans-Pacific Partnership is not about trade. It's about multinational corporate power desiring to avoid inspections, labor, and environmental regulations in the name of profit. Why else would we be prevented from knowing where our food comes from?
Thank you. Carrie Westlin is next, followed by Patty Hine.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Westlin. I reside in unincorporated Lane County, but I am the president and CEO of Traveling County, which is located at 754 Olive Street in downtown Eugene. And I'm here to advocate for moving high-speed fiber forward as quickly and efficiently as possible in the downtown core. I'm sorry I couldn't get here to listen in on the work session. I know that was a topic for you this evening, and I apologize if my comments are redundant to things that were already discussed. But first of all, I just want to commend the city, your staff team, and your partners on what you've already done around high-speed fiber downtown. It's pretty amazing, and it's been really a wonderful thing to witness, everybody coming together to get things incorporated as quickly and efficiently as possible. But as you've heard, I'm sure there's still a lot of work to be done, and there are a lot of us in the community that are really excited about getting that work moved forward. It's been really interesting for Traveling County as we watch the high-tech sector come to life in downtown and all the new energy and innovation, and what that's meant for the hospitality industry as we've seen new events come to life, from Indie Game Con, which has gone through two successful years, to the Eugene Comic-Con, to an upcoming EdTech conference, and the spillover when you have a positive industry sector, what that does for reputation building for the community overall and how it intersects with other industries like hospitality. So we feel like we're seeing some momentum. We hope that it can maintain forward motion as quickly as possible to maintain a great competitive edge for the city of Eugene and continue the growth in the technology sector and the ancillary benefits that it's bringing forward. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Patty Hine is next, followed by Zandi.
Good evening. My name is Patty Hine. I lived in the county for 20 years, and I call Eugene my home. I want to thank Councilor Sorette for bringing forward the resolution opposing the Pacific, Trans-Pacific Partnership, excuse me, International Trade Agreement. I'm here representing 350 Eugene, a local affiliate of 350.org, an organization founded to build a broad, global grassroots movement to solve the climate crisis. When I was born 15 years ago, when I was born 60 years ago, the parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere was 314 parts per million. Today, it is 404 parts per million and rising. The scientists say we have a very narrow window of time to mitigate the worst effects of global warming, including ocean acidification, sea level rise, disease, famine, species die-off. We in 350 are committed, for the sake of future generations, so they might inherit, along with their children, the wondrous and necessary biodiversity we were born into. This resolution opposing the Trans-Pacific Partnership is vitally important. Cities and communities are taking the lead across our country to effect the needed policies to protect our planet and the people who live here. We are a great example of that. As you know, our U.S. Congress has been corrupted by obscene amounts of money. The middle class is dramatically shrinking. Opportunities for working people are constrained by a race to the bottom for the cheapest commercial goods. Wages are flat and decreasing, and prosperity, which had been enjoyed by our people, is being shifted to the most wealthy in our country. Trade deals like the TPP, which are not chiefly about trade, but about corporations using extrajudicial methods to sue countries and municipalities that stand in the way of their profits, including laws that govern worker wages and safety and the environment. It's a giveaway of our sovereign power to govern ourselves and is a huge disincentive to policies we decide we need to protect our communities. For example, implementing sound labor laws and limiting fossil fuel infrastructure development. It is so fitting that the city of Eugene, being a national leader with our Climate Recovery Ordinance, which will soon be started to be implemented, that we go on record with other regional cities and counties against secret trade deals that lead us in the exact wrong direction at this crucial time. Eugene is a leader. We're proud of you. 350 Eugene urges you to support the resolution.
Thank you. Zandi is next, followed by Plato Wellman.
Hi, my name is Zandi Zinkie, and I'm a resident of Ward 1. And I'd like to talk about how Keysee Square, as it is, where it is, speaks symbolically as a holdout against the pressures of the economy, that is, the manufactured pressures which are ruining our world, as the other points made tonight speak to TPT and climate ordinances. All are controlled by the economy, which, the model is not working. And I would like, so as I said, Keysee Square, I believe, speaks symbolically as a holdout against the pressures of economy, which I don't buy. Long before I knew Keysee Square was an issue, before I gave much thought at all, much at all, about public space, private space, commercial space, et cetera, I registered that something was being provided in a place where other interests had a great likelihood of taking it away. I looked at Keysee Square, and I didn't think, wow, this is a city that's managed to hold out against the pressures of economy, but I felt it, and in that, Eugene seemed great and promising. Speaking of Keysee Square as it is, I like the two blank brick walls, probably even prefer the unadornedness of the place as is over a prettified plaza with waterfalls and whatnot. That's my preferred aesthetic for this particular spot. It's a bare-bones space, rather indestructible, no doors, gates, chains, nor pretty things to protect. Somehow, even as it sits smack in the middle of the downtown commercial district on the main business street crossroads, it's been kept, a place for the people, and with the aesthetic it has now, perhaps one not just for those of the patron class accustomed to pretty solicitation. You want to put in benches, a fountain, chess tables, maybe a play structure for kids. Great, seems like a good compromise, but please, no. I absolutely reject the notion that it's a problem just as is. Thanks.
It starts going off before you start talking. Hello. I hope you all are having a great day, not too cold. The reason I'm here is I passionately want to encourage you to use the powers within you to keep Keysee Square a free, open space. And I understand why there's an urge to do something with Keysee Square because maybe undesirable people hang out there. And so I understand that impulse towards building, like a high-rise apartment building or another business. But, you know, I hung out downtown all day today, and I was driving around, and there is a lot of empty space that could already have businesses. There's places that are, like, for lease, for rent, where people could start businesses, where people could put homes in. But Keysee Square is our only free, open, public space in downtown with no curfew, where you can just show up and just be and not feel pressured to spend money. But it's more than about a money thing, in all honesty, because Keysee Square belongs to the city as a whole. It doesn't just belong to poor people. I know there's a lot of fear of poor people. And I want to say that that fear of the other, that fear of the poor person, is precisely why we need to keep Keysee Square an open, free, public place. Sure, we can improve upon it. We can develop it. We can do stuff, but we should not put a business there. We should not put a building there. The architects of this country, when they were designing our public park system, realized it was insanely important, not insanely important, it was super-important to have places where the different segments of society could interact with each other. The architect of our park system, his last name's Olmsted, he was very passionate about how this creates a more cohesive society in which there's less fear, less othering, less disgust of the other, and more acceptance of, more working together. And Keysee Square provides that, believe it or not. In the past few years, I've hung out at Keysee Square and drummed, rode my bicycle, like, played music, hung out with friends, played games, and I own a property. I own a business. I'm not a poor person. I'm not scared of the homeless people that are down there. Matter of fact, if any of y'all want to come down to Keysee Square and talk about how free, open, public spaces were integral to the birthing of democracy, meet me there sometime.
Mark Davis is next, followed by Dan White.
Hi, my name's Mark Davis. I work downtown at CodeChops Coworking Space in the Broadway Commerce Center. It's in Ward 1. And I was lucky enough to be the very first customer to get the $99 a month affordable broadband downtown. And before we had the fiber, you know, we had all sorts of issues with our business-grade internet connection. We can have up to a dozen people working in the coworking space at any time. They might be trying to do video calls with their clients, and there were just a lot of issues. And it was just something you'd kind of learn to deal with as a businessperson, is that the internet sucks and that it's a constant source of worry for everybody. But after the fiber, all of our issues just went away. It was like somebody waved a magic wand. We stress tested it by getting as many people and as many video calls and watching as much YouTube as you can, just to see where the limits are, and so far, we haven't found them yet. The word got out about how good the fiber is, and for the first time in the five years that we've been doing business, now we have a waiting list of people who want to rent desks at the space, and we're considering expanding. Having professional bandwidth that's affordable, that the affordable fiber provides, is so important for my members to maintain... important for my members to maintain a professional appearance to the remote customers in cities like San Francisco and New York. We never want to give the impression that Eugene is a second-class city to run your tech business. And let's face it, all businesses are tech businesses these days, because you have to be online to do business. I got one brief case study, a member, CTO of a San Francisco company, works out of Codechops, also works out of his house. He reports that after fiber, it's faster for him to walk from his house on Eighteenth and Charmelton to downtown to upload his work than it is for him to upload the work from home. So the fiber is literally dragging him downtown. I won't bore you with tech numbers, but if we want to attract the type of talent that can take the full advantage of the internet, Eugene needs a fiber infrastructure that will attract them. So the old adage could be more true in this case, if you build it, they will come.
Dan White is next, followed by Larry Sullivan.
My name is Dan White. I live in Ward Three. It's going to sound a little, a little like a rehash of what Mr. Davis said, he spoke very well, but I'm the technical director of Pipeworks and one of its co-founders. We're a computer game studio located in the old Kaufman Building downtown. We were started in 1999 and now have over seventy people. I am here to advocate for support of the Downtown Fiber Initiative. I am, of course, biased, but I would like to think that Pipeworks represents the sort of business that Eugene would like to have. Almost all of our customers are out of state, so we bring money into the community, and almost all of our expenses are salaries for our employees, so we deposit our money into the pockets of the people who work for us. Our business is growing, we were, we've almost doubled in size in the past five years, but one of the major impediments to us continuing to grow is internet access. The reality is that high-speed internet access on the desktop is essential for any sort of software development or high-tech enterprise. It's expected that people are doing research, very often instructional materials, our videos now, we're often downloading software development kits, that sort of thing, and you take that traffic and multiply it by seventy, and the requirements are pretty, start to become pretty severe. Unlike Mr. Davis, we don't have the gigabit access right now, we are constrained to forty megabit, which is not much more than what you have at your house, and that's shared by seventy people. So to give you a more specific example, we have a QA group that we started a couple of years ago, two years ago, it's now grown to thirteen people. Regularly, these people need to download images of games that are in development, which are typically between twenty and thirty gig. So again, you can see that this is a major impediment to us getting our work done. And if we had access to high-speed fiber, you know, we could hire more people and continue to grow the QA department, which is our plan. Speaking, Mark mentioned the necessity of maintaining contact with people who work in other cities. So I had the unfortunate experience last Friday, I was in a video conference with somebody working at a very large tech company in Seattle. We got to the point of, I'd like to show you this thing, but because of the video, because of our bandwidth limits, I had to tell him, we'll send you the file after the video conference is over, because I knew if we tried to transfer it during the conference, we risked having the connection breakup. Part of the reason I'm very excited about this initiative is, over the years, people in government have asked us, what can government do to help us? And up until now, there haven't really been any ways that, thank you.
Thank you. Larry Sullivan is next, followed by Todd Edman.
Mayor Piercey and city council members, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Larry Sullivan, I'm the superintendent on Lain Education Service District. Lain E S D provides programs and services for the sixteen districts in Lain County, and we focus primarily on four areas: students with special need, administrative services, technology supports, and school improvement. I'm talking loud enough, sorry. The downtown high-speed fiber project will positively impact the students of Lain County in the following ways. First, with an increase in high-tech businesses coming into downtown, the students deciding on a career will have an expanded opportunity and access to technology-related careers. Second, expanding the Eugene municipal network will broaden the opportunities for local school districts and their career and technical education programs. A key component of our CTE programs is working with industry partners, bringing the high-speed internet access will increase the number of available partners to give students a more diverse look at professional opportunities as they make future life choices. Third, the project will increase reliability for accessing online curriculum materials. School districts are increasingly integrating web content into their curriculum. The students' need to access online resources are really as important as bringing textbooks to class. With the work in the downtown and proposed upgrades to connections to Portland and San Jose, this internet access provide, provides the students will become even more reliable, which sometimes it's not. And finally, the fourth, the project will lead to an increased infrastructure for Lain County. Lain E S D serves as the internet provider to all local area school districts and Lain Community College. Over the last ten years, the internet connection speeds for school districts in Lain County has grown amazingly to a hundred times what they were in 2003. Lain E S D has continued to provide this cost at no additional recurring cost to the districts. As projects, projects like this continue to develop, the local infrastructure, this growth can continue to, for the school districts in Lain E S D. Increased infrastructure often translates to reduced costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Edman is next, followed by Donna Riddle.
Hello, I'm Todd Edman, I live in Ward Four, George Pulling is my representative. I'm a huge fan of the Downtown Fiber Project. Primarily saw this as a huge priority because I saw that the incumbents in the system providing internet access simply were not upgrading our access. It had been ten to fifteen years since speeds had significantly upgraded in the region, and it was simply becoming inadequate for business. I lived in New York for a number of years and went to school in Portland, and I have friends who are doing business in those different cities. And, you know, to think about the fact that Eugene is twenty-second on the list in terms of average download speeds in the state of Oregon alone, really does not put us at the position to be able to compete. And yet, we have a tremendous amount of talent here. It's shocking the amount of people who are programmers, who have desire to start their own businesses, and the profile of these businesses is fantastic. Twenty, thirty employees that have grown from nothing, from people who live here and will keep their companies here. These, this internet and downtown fiber project is the exact type of product that these businesses need to continue to be here and to participate here and to be the type of community members that we want in Eugene. And so I really hope that you guys will continue to support this project. I know it'll be a huge boon for my technology companies, and I'm proud to be here telling my friends in New York and in Portland the types of cool projects that we're working on here, because this is genuinely something I can brag to them about. So thank you.
Donna Riddle is next, followed by William Ivanoff.
I just want to reiterate, I think, the need for more open space in Eugene, not less. And I also think, if we were going to build something, it should be for low-income people, and I would prefer it elsewhere, but we don't have, we have enough gentrification in this town already, we don't need to gentrify our downtown area, it should be a place for everyone. I do want to thank you all for your support of providing shelter for people. I want to thank Claire for bringing forth the resolution against the TPP, because I think that we're not going to have a livable environment if we allow multinational corporations who are looking for profit, not for people. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
William Ivanoff is next, followed by Lon Otterby.
Hello, my name is William Ivanoff, and I live in Ward One. And I'd like to just talk to you a little bit about history and about the future of downtown. Mind you, I don't know what the future is of downtown, but I just wanted to tell you about history, so you might have an understanding of where we should go. So there's this place that used to be called 901 Willamette Street. And I have a couple pictures, I gave a pamphlet of these, what I'm speaking about today. There was a building at 901 Willamette Street, there's pictures of it from 1927 and 1963. 901 Willamette Street, just in case you weren't aware, that is where Broadway Plaza is currently. It was a historic building, beautiful building, you should take a look at the pictures. In 1927, the city made a decision to alter the way that people move about the city. They did three ordinances. One was to get rid of the street railway that operated in the city. A second one, that same year, was to change Ninth Avenue to Broadway. Why did we need that when we already have Willamette Street? Then they decided also that same year to start using buses. Well, I guess if they got rid of the trolley, they had to put in buses. So then, we have the urban renewal in the sixties that basically tore out a lot of the old buildings for this mall that we no longer really have, other than a remnant of it known as Broadway Plaza. A number of people who are proponents of keeping Broadway Plaza say that we need public open spaces in the heart of Eugene. Well, as you've seen in your earlier session, downtown already had one. It was designed by Eugene, or the Skinner and Mulligan family, at the park blocks right out here. So we don't necessarily need another back-down open space. We can, but we have a lot of parking spaces, parking spaces. And the building that is proposed there, I'm not really a fan of what the design looks like, because I think in Eugene, for some reason, we have this idea that all buildings, new buildings must look like something that doesn't distract a driver. We need to have buildings that are attractive to people walking on the street, something where you have to get out of your car to enjoy that building. So I don't, I'm not a fan of the building or changing what is downtown, but we need to do something about it.
Thank you. Lon Otterby is next, followed by Matt Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Piercey, council members. My name is Lon Otterby, I live up in the Mohawk River Valley, little farmer up there. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as a representative of the National Sierra Club, on behalf of the resolution, before you're introduced by Councilor Sarret, on the TPP. After more than five years of closed negotiations, the governments of the TPP partnership have finally released the text of the controversial pact. In the six thousand pages of binding resolutions, the words "climate change" are not mentioned once. The TPP would empower fossil fuel corporations to attack climate policies through private tribunals. The TPP would lock in dirty fossil fuel production by expediting natural gas exports. For example, the Jordan Cove LNG terminal would find protection under the TPP. The TPP would impose new limits on government efforts to combat climate disruption by transferring clean jobs overseas that became dirty jobs. The investor-state dispute settlement policy of the TPP has a provision where they can say, we expected to make a profit, and we're not, so you have to change your policies. And these questions are handled in a private sector tribunal with three attorneys who rotate between being judges and being representatives of the corporation. The TPP is a bad deal for local labor, a bad deal for Oregon, a bad deal for Lain County, and Eugene, unless Congress admits the TPP to include the provisions asked for in the resolution. Thank you in advance for your support in local labor and the environment by opposing this disastrous trade agreement as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Miller is next, followed by Art Bowman.
I'm Matt Miller, I live in Springfield, but I work in Ward One. And I'm a partner with Toba Capital. We recently have moved into Eugene with the mindset that, well, let me tell you what Toba does. We find innovative technology companies that are, that have a new product, a new solution, and we help them grow and get it to market. And we invest in those companies. And we were working off of a hypothesis that Eugene has a talent pool that we can access that will help these rapidly growing companies grow faster. And so we've decided to open up a sales office here in Eugene. And I'm here to advocate for the Downtown Fiber Project, because as we're evaluating what we can do, we, as an investment company, we look at three things. Do we have access to the talent that can help us accomplish what we want, which we do in Eugene? Do we have the ability to put them in place and lead them, which we do, because that's what I do? And then do we have the capacity to create accessibility so that they can get to their customers and can the customers get to them? And that's our gating capacity factor right here. I'm going to walk you through a case study. We just moved a team down here, and we, we looked at, okay, what do we need this team to do? We need this team to be able to contact customers in a cutting-edge manner. And by cutting-edge manner, we need them to be able to access customers, not just the traditional way over phone and email, but we need them to engage customers by video chat and streaming video back and forth. And so we looked at the bandwidth requirements of that, and we realized, well, with the bandwidth that we have available right now, our max capacity for this team is nine reps. Ideally, we'd like it to be twelve, but we just don't have the bandwidth capacity right now to go with twelve reps, so it's nine reps. And so I thought you guys would be really interested to hear that. You know, I'm in this role because I'm passionate about bringing jobs into this area, and we've been able to rapidly find good people, we've been able to rapidly train them to be effective. And right now, our key gating requirement is the capacity we have to get customers, be able to get those reps to access customers, and it's bandwidth, and the fiber project addresses that and addresses it handsomely. The other thing that it does for us, you know, I work in the technology industry, where there's a lot to be said for the cool factor, that's why Seattle, the Bay Area, and even Portland now, it's got that, that cool factor. And you heard it earlier, you know, Eugene's twenty-second on the list as far as internet access, and that's, that's the opposite of the cool factor, is we're recruiting these technology companies, saying, hey, look, you should, not only will Toba invest in you, but you should invest in Eugene by allowing us to create sales teams for you, and that hurts our cool factor. So just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it and could hear my perspective as an investor, when I'm trying to decide to bring more jobs in here, what I look at. So thank you.
Art Bowman is next, followed by Gwendolyn Iris.
Art Bowman, First Ward, I wanted to speak in favor of the resolution opposing the Trans-Pacific Partnership. This is largely a symbolic measure, but I want you to think, as you consider it, what it actually symbolizes. For over two generations, working people have seen their economic fortunes significantly decline. I don't need to name the causes, trade agreements, union busting, industrial factors, and we've seen the results. We've got a standoff in eastern Oregon, we've got Donald Trump supporting the polls. These were people who had been happily working, supporting, raising families, going into pension retirement funds, and those aren't there anymore. They're angry and they don't trust the government. We see the results. This will be yet another body blow to them, and I don't think we can afford it. And naturally, they distrust government at all levels. So one thing this will symbolize is So one thing this will symbolize is, to me, would be the sign that the members of this body care about these working people, because they don't see people caring about them. Thank you.
Gwendolyn Iris is next, followed by Michael Adams.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Iris. I live off Highway 99. I'm not sure which ward that I'm here to speak on behalf of keeping Keyzee Square publicly owned open space. I've heard a lot of people address the open space issue in referring to the park blocks. But one thing that sets Keyzee Square apart from the other areas downtown that are open is the fact that there is no curfew. And after the free speech plaza in front of the county courthouse had the 11 p.m. curfew put on it, that basically left Keyzee Square the only curfew-free speech area we have in the heart of our city, which is really disturbing to me when you think about the history of Eugene and the positive action that has come out of this space. We are full of environmental action. We're working for a greener world. We pride ourselves on being a place where we can express ourselves freely and be heard. And to take that space away from us would be a huge blow to what the city at one point was about. I'm starting to see it go in a direction that isn't necessarily a bad, but part of our culture is being left behind. And I feel that anything, anything that is considered around that space should focus on bringing people in, not pushing people out, not putting a building on it, not eliminating it, improving it, making it more welcome. If there's safety issues, if there's safety concerns, we can address those in other ways. Thank you.
Michael Adams is next, followed by Kimberly Cullen.
Good evening. I'm Michael Adams. I live in the Whittaker. Who remembers the term "mall rat"? It's a term that I was called when I was a kid. I'm still a kid. But I'm 28 as of five days ago. And when I was 18, 10 years ago, I was hanging out downtown. It was a place where I could talk to people, where I could come across the stern person saying, "You need to get a life, get a job." And then in the next second, "Hey, live free! Have fun!" There's a lot of varying perspectives in our city. We're a city of very dynamic proportions that, where we crisscross on all sorts of platforms. And because we do all this crisscrossing and zigzagging and talk to this person and that person the next, we come with all these, come up with all these unique ideas, things that I don't think we're going to find in a coffee shop. No offense, I love coffee. But the creativity that's inspired by just running across that person with that cool shirt and you spark a conversation, or they got that really cool multicolor hat, beanie, whatever they call it, that's all going to be gone if we're going to start, if we're going to keep eliminating the public spaces that we see these people in. I learned how to sketch people by sitting in a Starbucks in South Carolina. I kid you not. I went from drawing stick figures five years earlier, then all of a sudden, I was drawing actual people, because I sat down and I had a conversation. That opportunity wouldn't have been present if I hadn't gone out into public. The reason I even bring that up is because I would have much rather said that I was in a public square sketching a beautiful scenery that Oregon is famous for than being in a Starbucks sketching two, three, four, five, six, just keep going, and just be a fly on the wall. When you're outside, people want to see what you're doing. And if we're going to eliminate these spaces, we're going to eliminate that opportunity. So please, do not develop Keyzee Square. Leave it as it is. Let that opportunity stay.
Kimberly Cullen is next, followed by Susan Costa.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Cullen, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Saturday Market. And we are located in Ward 1. So I'm here today with market leaders and members. And first, I want to say thank you for starting the public discussion regarding improvements to the park blocks. Saturday Market has held our weekly market on the park blocks for more than half of our 46 years. We are significant stakeholders. We have much to offer discussions regarding use of the park blocks and potential ways to improve it. We also know it works from an events standpoint. We look forward to contributing as partners in the public engagement process. Thank you.
Susan Costa is up next. And then I've got Melissa, and it looks like it's A-C-H-T-L-M-I-C-H, something like that. So you probably know who you are. Go right ahead.
Hi, I am Susan Costa. I live in Eugene, and I am in Ward 5. I am also a new store owner in downtown Eugene. And I see two sides of downtown. One is a place with a lot of vibrancy and good things and urban renewal. And I also see every day things that are just actually really scary. And I understand that's unpopular to say, and I'm sorry about that, but I actually had to call the Red Hats today. And so because of that, I am all in favor of urban renewal. I am in favor of the development of the Broadway Plaza. I think everybody who's in downtown and everybody who's actually not comfortable coming downtown now would benefit and would appreciate and would benefit from development of the Broadway Plaza. And so I am in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa is next, and she'll tell me what that spells. And then it's Chad Erickson.
Hi, I'm Melissa Actine, and I'm in Ward 8. I live at 3979 Terrace Trail. And I have a new business that was a year old yesterday in downtown Eugene. It's a little clothing gift store. And we love being downtown. We appreciate Colette from Eugene Cultural Services and all of you guys for all the efforts that you do to bring activities downtown and try and bring locals downtown. Having locals come downtown is a problem. A third of my business is locals, a third are tourists, and a third are students. And when the students are gone and the tourists are gone, business is flat, because locals do not want to come downtown. When you have activities downtown, it's a vibrant, Keyzee Square is vibrant, park blocks are vibrant. We had a great light-up downtown event. Thanks, Mayor Piercy, for coming for that. But when you don't have activities, just go down there, and you'll see it's not a used space. Use the space to bring people down, to make it a more vibrant area. It's a corner of your two most important commercial streets in the core. Put something that people will come downtown all the time for. And then develop the park blocks so that they're beautiful and have events constantly to show locals that downtown is not scary. It's a fun place to be. We love downtown, but it can be better, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Erickson is next, followed by Logan Flores.
Good evening. My name is Chad Erickson. I am a recent transplant from New York City to Eugene, Oregon. I have two businesses. I am an independent freelance visual effects artist online, currently, as of today, skipping out on work with a company in South Africa. And I have a fiancee who owns a shop on 7th between Lincoln and Charnelton. So I'm going to rush through three separate things: park blocks. Looking at the economic development set forth for this town coming from New York City, if we were to break down the population in New York, in San Francisco, Seattle, and above, I'll explain why in a minute. NYC is 8.5 million people. Seattle is pushing 670,000 people. Portland is currently at an occupancy of 500,000 people. Eugene is 150,000. San Francisco is 850,000, and LA is 3.8 million. You might wonder why those numbers are important. As a VFX artist, over the past four years, all the jobs that I worked on in New York City were remotely via fiber, traveled to LA, and then up through Vancouver City. So all of the films were shot in Vancouver. All of the producers and everybody lived in LA. They screened dailies, and then they were sent to us overnight, and then we worked on them all day. We're talking projects like Smash, Royal Pains, Borgia. I just did the intro for Bates Motel. And the movie that I'm currently working on will be released in 2016 through an independent actor that worked with some big names, but sadly, I'm contractually obligated to not say. So what does that mean? Everybody says, well, woe is me, Eugene isn't a big city. The estimations for Eugene's growth over the next 20 to 25 years, they're saying by 2025, Eugene will be at 500,000 people. That's a 350,000-person increase between now and then. What does that mean to Eugene? Eugene is now going to surpass Portland, basically. So what can you guys do to prepare for that influx of people? What can you do to be able to sustain the creatives that are inside of this community? I think the economic development of your downtown is huge. If you look at the traffic maps along the Belt Line, my property that my fiancee runs is right at the actual off-ramp to quote-unquote downtown Eugene. No one actually gets off of the Belt Line at downtown Eugene. Everybody swings around downtown and then comes in through the other corridor. So we are losing traffic daily to people that are avoiding the downtown blocks. All right? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Logan Flores is next, followed by Lori Powell.
I'm not that good at public speaking. It's kind of rare that I get in front of a mic and a bunch of people and talk about my thoughts. But let me just say, my parents came to town recently, and I walked in-
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm Logan Flores, and I live off the River Road line. I work in the Bethel area for Peterson Barn Community Center, a very beautiful place and a very beautiful park there, which is a nexus for gathering community, which is really amazing. One of the things that I think we're kind of missing is a public space that protects us from the rain in some type of way, so we can say hello to each other, not without being under umbrellas or in coats. But whatever, that's here or there. My point is that I walked my parents through Keyzee Square, and they were really amazed by it. But what I had to definitely tell them was that the lights here suck. If you walked into Keyzee Square right now, you would go, oh, there's these blaring lights in my face. We would not have this meeting in a room with that type of light at all. We would never gather with that type of light. So in other words, I'm trying to say, Keyzee Square is not attractive almost at all. In any way, the people who are there aren't that attractive. The lighting that there is not attractive. The sidewalk is not that attractive. It just doesn't want to pull people in. But still, I go there and I do movement arts. I'm a martial artist. So I go there and I just practice form, or I have discussions with people on the fly about stance, or breath, or posture, so many different topics. But essentially, it's a great place for me to go, hey, look at something that I can do. Come talk to me. Come share with me. Come learn from me. Let me learn from you. I really think it'd be terrible to take that away and put more businesses that are just basically another iteration of a business five feet away from it, like another place that sells pizza or coffee, or another place that just sells bread, cheese, whatever. So my point is that instead of putting businesses there, we should put things there that are attractive. Events downtown have been really amazing there at Keyzee Square. Like, let's say, even the dodgeball tournament that I got to take a full video of and send to my friends, that there's like this great dodgeball tournament happening in the vacant space that is Keyzee Square. So there was a good point made earlier that Keyzee Square is awesome right now, because it is. It's an open space, which means it can be filled with things. Maybe we shouldn't fill it, but maybe we should make it more attractive again. That should be really the goal of, you know, our low amount of public space that exists. I'd like to put this in parallel with, like, starting cattle ranches and national forests. It's like, it'd be a really poor idea to take the smallest amount of public land that we have left and like give it to businesses to like profit from. I think it's more valuable to grow from the green out and grow Creek Keyzee Square into other examples, as in, if we make Keyzee Square amazing and attractive, we can go, oh, we can make this more attractive and that more attractive, because it worked over here. But essentially, there needs to be more energy in that direction, instead of creating a whole new system for that area. Once again, like, more businesses in that area and more money in commerce.
Lori Powell is next, followed by Mike Biglin.
Good evening. My name is Lori Powell, and I live in Ward 1. I'm here with 350 Eugene, a climate activist group. And as inspiration to pursue immediate implementation of the Climate Recovery Ordinance, I'd like to read the foreword from this book called Wind Glaciers Slept. It's written by M. Jackson. She is a doctoral student in geography and earth sciences at the University of Oregon. And she is currently in Iceland studying melting glaciers. I think our planet is slowly becoming disabled. Due to climate change in natural processes that digest carbon, regulate temperature, keep the climate on an even keel, everything is off-kilter. Undoubtedly, unquestionably, it has been shown with certainty that the way we live our lives is causing these systems to fail. M. Jackson. And the next, what follows is by Bill McKibben, who founded 350. This is true, as true as it is possible to get. There is a huge elephant always present in every room on our planet right now, the elephant of climate change. Nothing humans have ever done is so big, and nothing so big has ever been so thoroughly ignored. And the reasons it's been ignored, and the reasons we must ignore it no longer, are the reasons in this book. Not ultimately the prosaic and practical questions about sea level rise and increased risk of drought and ocean acidification. These things are all crucially important, but they're not the core. At the core, somehow, is the question of whether the big brain was a good adaptation. Or more precisely, if it came attached to a big enough heart to get us out of the trouble we're in, to get us out of the habit of staring at the shiny object nearby, and to look instead at the mountain, the forest, my wife, your mother, our meaning. Those are the kinds of questions easiest to answer in the company of Caribou and Humpback or family and friends. The real company, not the virtual, pretend, screen-based company. We live in an abstract, mediated world, and in that kind of world, it seems possible that all that is real and beautiful might slip right by us, especially our home planet in all its buzzing, complex, and cruel glory. And so we fight. Sure, we screw in the new light bulb, but mostly, we screw up our courage. Screw up our courage to well and truly love. So that may seem a bit distant from a detailed implementation of plan, but thank you for listening.
Mike Biglin is next, followed by Brittany Quick-Warner.
Hi, I'm Mike Biglin. I'm actually a member of 350.org as well, but that's not why I'm here. I have two businesses, a lot of businesses, a team of 11.
Give me the mic, Mike.
You need to get a little closer.
Mike, Mike. Okay, there we go. I have two businesses with a team of 11 in Eugene. And I grew up here. Moved back about 11 years ago. And it is amazing to see, just in the last three years, sort of the tech community and the startup community, this sort of enthusiasm, the energy in that. I didn't see anything like that. You go downtown, you can see it with the businesses coming up and what's happening. And I'm here to talk about fiber in Eugene. You see the infrastructure- You see the infrastructure for the existing internet, and that's sort of some of the lifeblood of these new startups. And I would sort of compare it to if you had a car, and it, every once in a while, would break down, and max speed was 20 miles an hour, and you had the sort of the opportunity, and you're trying to run your business with this car. And really sort of trying to change that, you know, having that ability to have something that is really fundamentally the same price, except it can do all the things that you needed to do. And that's really sort of the difference with the two buildings right now that have fiber downtown, and that's sort of the opportunity to really move fiber to the next level. You have that, there are four sort of, four things that I can really see as I'm working with people. There's the remote workers, who, having good, fast internet makes remote working much, much easier. Not just easier, but even possible. And you have people that can do that with video calls. Really, video calls is sort of a big, a big piece of that in doing other things, and I think a few other speakers mentioned that. You also have sort of the ability to start up new companies. And you see dozens of new companies that have been starting up, and innovations, huge innovations that are possible, that made it possible when you have fast internet. Keeping existing companies here and that are trying to grow. You have investment money, and in the last few years, you have that investment money that has come in very different ways than I've seen it happen. And lastly, you have the potential for this to be a seed for this going to the consumer realm, and giving sort of competition with Comcast, and creating alternatives that really push the price down and really raise that quality up. Internet is sort of the democratizing factor for, for just information and bringing people together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Brittany Quick-Warner is next, followed by Megan Richter.
Good evening, city council mayor. I'm Brittany Quick-Warner with the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. And I've been here all night, but somehow, I managed to get myself at the end of the line. So, thank you for listening to all of us and for sitting here. We've heard tonight at the council work session just before this about two very different but important infrastructure projects for downtown. But, there's similarity, and their joint contribution to creating a next-generation downtown is significant. The Eugene Chamber believes that a next-generation gigabit-capable communications network in Eugene will create a range of benefits, from economic development and improved educational accessibility to expanded workforce opportunities. By delivering this high-speed, unconstrained fiber connectivity, the infrastructure holds the promise of expanding on existing innovations and for adding, acting as a springboard for innovations we have not yet imagined. I think a lot of speakers here touched on the point of fiber, and you all spoke eloquently about the benefits of them earlier. But, the piece that we have to remember is that in business, you've got to act fast if you want to capitalize on the opportunities. And fiber is a perfect example of an infrastructure that if we can gain access to, and if we can invest in for our community and do so quickly, then we can get ahead of the game in Eugene. And a lot of the tech companies here represented opinions about the benefits of it, but those benefits are growing in other communities as well. So, as a community, we need to act quickly and to figure out what tools we have to make this happen now and not two or five years from now, whenever we could be preceded by other communities who have done this already. Similarly, the Chamber believes that high-quality, appropriately utilized public space in our downtown core adds to the vibrancy and success of our communities downtown. We believe in good public space. And I appreciate the comments made by Allen Zelenka earlier tonight, and echoed by the mayor and other councillors, that this is a situation and issue we need to look at holistically. We can't just look at one space and identify the needs that we have there. We have limited public resources. We don't have all the money in the world to do all the things that we want to do downtown, and we have other issues in the community that we need to deal with. So, as a council, you have to make hard decisions about where we're going to invest our money. And if you look at it strategically, and if you look at our public spaces holistically, you can identify, you know, the park blocks or this area that our community has been deeded long ago, and that it's been the center of our community. Let's double down on that space and make it a place for everyone, a place that the folks who long to keep Keesey Square for all the reasons that they do can also have that same love for the park blocks. It should be a place that has historic significance and community significance, and that we can gather and talk to people and meet with folks and enjoy the art and the culture in our community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Megan Richter is next, followed by Linda Kelly.
Hi, I'm Megan Richter, and I'm in Ward 3. Thank you all for sitting tonight. I understand making change requires thoughtful discussion. Your decision to love the park blocks may not happen in my lifetime, but I'm hearing you talk about it, so you're saying there's a chance. I love the trees and the wolves, and having a place to take a break from my cube to step into the peacefulness of the park blocks midday. Regardless of the number of people using them or not using them, it is our city square, a place which has been a source of organic communal use. It is the potential to be a symbol to the world that Eugene is a place that people love and that loves its people. Not deciding to do something more with our spaces is a decision. To our community, it says, "We are not open to change, to imagination, or to chance." The rich history the farmer's market has provided us is worth remembering and pouring love into. It has evolved with times, and in its 100 years, it has evolved with the times. And in 100 years, maybe it will have a permanent home in the park blocks. I am proud of my city leaders for looking forward and being proactive about reimagining the park blocks and investing in fiber. But, I am saddened that this is a part of our history that was a gift and that has been forgotten in recent times. In closing, please save Keesey Square by selling it to the Two East Broadway team and giving it a chance at a full quality life. Thank you.
You. Linda Kelly is next, followed by Mark Kronk.
I just wanted to speak to the, I've been reading over the Climate Action Plan from back, and also the Progress Report 2015, and I've been struck by a few things. One of the things I'd really like to see us focus on is residential composting. And I'm not sure what all the impediments are to this, but I've just been spoiled. I've spent six years in San Francisco, and it has an amazing program. And I know both Portland and Salem have residential programs. So, I know that there's been fears about contaminating the organic waste stream with plastics and other non-compostables. That's one of the things that's been mentioned. So, I think that perhaps if the city could start an education program now with folks, I know San Francisco had to and continues to do ongoing education with residents to really make that program work. So, I'd like to really encourage at least that part to begin right now. And then also, I would love to have a better understanding about the impediments that are keeping us from moving forward, because I can see from the stats here, even though we're flaring off, using 75% of the methane coming off of the Short Mountain, there's still 25% of methane going up in the air, and that's a very potent greenhouse gas that could be mitigated easily. So, I'd like us to roll up our sleeves and start on citywide composting if we can. Thank you.
You. Mark Kronk is the last up.
Good evening, Kitty Piercy, city council. Ladies and gentlemen, to the city council and developers, why do you have a need to develop every open space, Keesey Square? What gave you the right to develop the earth? The earth is not yours, or anybody's to sell, rent, trade, or do what you want with. You all have no right doing what you are doing to the earth. Industrial development is killing the planet. Besides, there is already plenty of places to rent. Go down anywhere on campus, there's places for rent. Why are you building more when there's places already? They're not filled in yet. And the earth does not belong to us. We belong to the earth, Chief Seattle. And Hansel Adams says, "It is horrifying that we have to fight our own government to save the environment." And Tony Tenfingers, Ogala Sioux, "If you two could come to love the land as our ancestors did, all the problems of the world will fall away like the autumn leaves in the wind." And I have another proposal. If you're going to actually do any development down there, Keesey Square is kind of flat energy. I say a fountain. People talk about a fountain. Fountain's Feng Shui. It's good energy. You could put Keesey sitting around a fountain, have some cool colored lights there, and it would transform the whole energy of the whole downtown. All the other places in, like Europe, they all have that, and it's vibrant. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close a public forum and thank everyone for coming. I just wanted to say a couple of things for, most of the people who came to talk about the climate issue are gone. Some of them still here. I am going to work with a manager to set up a report, regular report on how we're doing and meeting our ordinance requirements, so we'll get that in motion. And then, I just, in terms of the last speaker, I just wanted to say, sometimes we think because there's a lot of student housing, it means there's a lot of vacancy. And I just want you to know that the vacancy rate in the city of Eugene is 2%, one of the lowest vacancy rates in the nation. So, it is really a, for us and for Portland and for many other places across this country, the vacancy rate is a crisis in terms of affordable housing for people, so it's a really important issue. Anybody else have anything they want to? Yes?
So, thanks, everyone who spoke. And I just wanted to respond to our first speaker asking us to support a resolution condemning anti-Muslim rhetoric. I'll definitely support such a resolution, and if I had not been asked by the Oregon AFL-CIO to sponsor the anti-Trans-Pacific partnership resolution, I might have brought that resolution to this meeting today. So, I'll look forward to receiving the materials you mentioned and potentially bringing such a resolution before the council to consider. Thank you.
Okay. So, now, we're going to move on with our agenda for this evening. First up is, next up is a consent calendar. Council president?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I'm the second.
Okay. The story of your life from now on. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. Next item is, I adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council, and I convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. It's the Urban Renewal Agency action items. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. This has to do with a resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual financial report. The audit firm, Isler CPA, has completed the audit of the agency's annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2015, and issued a clean opinion. For policymakers, a clean opinion means that the information in the report is accurate and reliable. And in addition, the auditors noted that the agency is in compliance with state regulations pertaining to debt, deposit of public funds, preparation and adoption of the budget, accounting records, and the related internal control structure. We are asking that the board approve a resolution acknowledging that it received the report.
You want to put that motion on the table?
Yes. I move to adopt Resolution 1078 acknowledging receipt of the annual financial report of the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Eugene for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. So, I'm going to now adjourn the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene a meeting of the Eugene City Council. And our next item is a work session in action on the presiding judge's salary. Council president?
I move to authorize the council president to sign an amendment to the city's contract with Judge Allen, increasing the hourly pay from $121 to $130, making that change retroactive to January 1, 2016.
Second.
I'm getting good at this.
Way to go.
Please never retire.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Last item is Counseloret's resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. So, I've forwarded this resolution and then made some tweaks to it, which you should have received an updated copy at your place today. Just, the changes were just some small language changes to make it read more clearly. This is a resolution, a symbolic resolution, as one of our speakers tonight mentioned, but I still think nonetheless important, that I was asked to bring forward by the Oregon AFL-CIO, which is asking organizations and governments throughout Oregon to take a position opposing the Trans-Pacific Partnership, which is an international treaty that our federal government is considering entering into, that I believe should be opposed by those of us who care about local control and protecting worker rights and the environment. Those of us who were paying attention to these things during the Clinton administration saw the terrible impacts of NAFTA on our manufacturing industry, just as one example, and other negative impacts on communities in other countries that were party to that treaty. And the consequences laid out in the resolution before you are real. And while adding our voice in opposition may not prevent this trade deal from going forward, it will put this city on record as opposing a treaty that has real potential to harm our local and state economy. And as other speakers tonight mentioned, the TPP could likely interfere with reaching some of our goals around climate recovery, particularly if we enter into some kind of regional effort with the mayors that Mayor Piercy met with recently for major cities up and down the West Coast. So, if we were taking action that some international business believed might interfere with their ability to make potential profits, they could turn around and sue us in an international tribunal and prevent us from implementing that local ordinance. So, I hope that my fellow councillors will support us in opposing the TPP and pass this resolution.
So, are you the language of the motion to put out?
Move, approve all of the resolutions.
Do you want me to read the whole resolution?
No, just move.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I would move the city council to approve a resolution opposing the extension of harmful trade policies as represented by the Trans-Pacific Partnership.
Second.
That's my job. She got out of it.
It's force of habit, Allen. I was in your position last.
In any case, it's been moved and seconded. For the discussion? Ready for a vote?
No.
Yeah, I agree with what Claire said. I really lament the dramatic loss of manufacturing jobs in this country. While there's lots of reasons for that, and it's very complicated, I do attribute that in large part to fair trade agreements like NAFTA. So, I'll support the reason for three reasons, support the resolution for three reasons. It's not good for the planet, it's not good for our workers, and it's not good for our democracy. It's not good for the planet, because I think it will hinder our ability to deal with climate change, and I fear we will see, and probably already have seen, our environmental laws overruled. Second, for workers, I think that it will result in lost jobs and lower wages and lower benefits. And third, I fear for our democracy in that the rules, written in secret by large corporations, are such that they overrule our sovereignty and our ability to govern the world. So, for those three reasons, I support the resolution.
All right. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I-
Second.
I'm leaving. You can stay if you wish. I'm leaving, you can stay if you wish. No.
Who gave me?